Welcome, everybody, to this workshop. We're gonna, before we begin, I need to disclose that my wife and I own 100 feet of road frontage, which is across from this, which basically gets to our back 40. But I feel that I can give this project a fair evaluation, but I will turn it to the board to make that determination.
I move that we allow Peter to participate in this and don't believe there's a conflict.
Second. All in favor? Okay, we'll begin, and welcome to everybody. We're gonna try to be as informal as possible, so everybody can get their questions. So first of all, we'll have a presentation from the developer. Carla, you'll have a very brief thing, a presentation from the developer, questions, comments from the board. Then I'm required to read any letters that people write in comments to the project. And then after that, we will open it up to you folks for any and all questions you have. So Carla, let's get going.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the workshop on a proposed subdivision that will be located off of Harris Road and Trillium Engineering Group representing the applicants. And Eric is here tonight to describe what's being proposed. Typically, when we have a workshop on a subdivision that's in the rural residential areas, as this one is, the planning board's preferred type or style of subdivision is a conservation subdivision. And the ordinance says that the developer should come in with both a traditional plan and a conservation style. But this developer, right from the beginning, knew that he would prefer to have a conservation style subdivision, and that's, I think, what we'll be talking about tonight.
Excellent, thank you, Carla, I appreciate that. I'm Eric Doobie with Trillium Engineering Group, and I'm here with the new owners. And we wanted just to discuss this project with you and kind of get your feedback, and feedback from other people, from letters and other comments. So basically, this is the existing plan, I'm just gonna go through this quick, and it's pretty simple in this, but we have Harris Road essentially running down in this direction. We have an existing house lot here, and then we have an existing older house-like campy style building that's there, not in as great a shape as this existing house that's here. We do have, there's an existing kind of swale ditch that goes down here, and then it crosses Harris Road on this low side. This is high, and basically everything flows down, and that shows what the contours on that. So in our proposed condition, this is pretty simple, the lot kind of, as Carla mentioned, it kind of lends itself into this type of development for a couple reasons. We, in the proposed condition, we put this as a house lot, that's the existing one on Harris Road. We were able to get a lot adjacent to it that we can utilize, and then, of course, keep that other lot. So there'll be three lots off of Harris Road. And then this allows us to keep this 75-foot buffer that's mandated, that, per code, around the entire perimeter. And then we're able to take our roadway and not have to cross any ditch, water courses, anything like that. We tucked it against this side, which allows us to do potential stormwater area on the low side, again capturing any of the roadway drainage and being able to treat that stormwater, and then slow it down before it gets to any Harris Road ditches and the existing drainage course that we're talking about. We're doing a smaller width roadway, which the ordinance allows, because we can do five lots off of, basically off this new roadway. So instead of doing a 50-foot right-of-way, we're doing a 36-foot right-of-way, and then having a smaller roadway, and that basically gets us under the 50 trips, 10 per lot, that we discussed with Carla and with Bill on that. Keeping our buffers, keeping a potential easement access to adjacent lands for just connectability if we need to, and then again, keeping our open space, and this is why it kind of lends itself into a conservation with the perimeter 75-foot buffer, and then the open space that kind of hits a lot of this natural area that we have in the back, and then we have some wetlands and some possible vernal pools, potential vernal pools, and we're away from those setbacks. So it, what our development basically does is utilizes the land pretty well, keeps us, keeps our potential houses in the upwind areas, and again, easy accessway with a easily maintainable road with good slopes and good elevation to be able to drain away from that. So we'll have to utilize private wells, septic, and obviously, we have existing septic and wells in these parcels, we'll have to have a new one out at this parcel. And I think that's about it, kind of short and sweet, nice and easy. I can turn it over for questions.
Questions first from the board, George?
Yeah, I'd just like to put it in context for the public as to where you are on Harris Road, that might be helpful relative to either the Route 9 end or the Tuttle Road end?
So we're pretty close to the Tuttle Road end. You know, you have the Chetsway subdivision that's kind of up in here, then you have, this turns into wooded area, but there's an existing field that's in, on this parcel that's directly adjacent to us. So I think it's like a half a mile down from Tuttle Road, so pretty close to the Tuttle Road intersection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carla, oh, sorry. In a prior meeting, I forget which one we were talking about, but you had mentioned that the council had been concerned about the connectivity, making sure, which is reflected here. However, that back lot, that that 30-acre, that 30-foot wide right-of-way would go to is a rather large lot, and I have no idea if it's subdivisible or not. But I don't think a 30-foot wide right-of-way would allow for any subdivision, and if the 36-foot wide road is so close, based on the number of lots on it now, then it's not gonna support much in the way of other lots, other development in that back lot. When the council did that, are there any sort of, is there anything in our ordinance that addresses that, that someone in this situation developing a subdivision needs to plan for other subdivisions that would need access through their subdivision?
Okay, well, I think that the main point to clarify is that it was never intended that a connector road would use the previous subdivision's access road for access to that subdivision. The purpose of a connector between two subdivisions is if there is an emergency, we have a tree down at the end of one of them, there's another way for trucks and fire trucks to get in and out, people to get in and out. So I don't think that's a concern. The fire chief will be reviewing this and will...
Okay, but it's not intended for a primary access?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay, thank you.
That wouldn't be fair to these folks who are gonna buy these lots.
I would not disagree with that sentiment, but just wanted to make sure.
Other questions, Paul?
Two questions. The, on the sketch for Lot 2, I don't, I didn't recognize any access or any driveway or any way to get to that lot. Is that from Harris or from where?
So Lot 2, are you talking about, forgive me on this?
Well, again, I'm talking about...
In between the two existing.
There seem to be no drive or access to that lot.
Yeah, no, the access will be from Harris Road.
Okay, it's just not on the sketch yet, apparently.
That's correct.
Okay. The other question is the open space. The topography looks like there's about a 35-foot change in elevation, depending where you are. Is most of the open space on highly-sloped forested property that you were pointing to?
I think it varies. I think it varies between the lots of having some slopes in the open space and then some flat areas, and then up to, essentially up to, kind of this is the top of the hillside that we're talking about up here. So you have a very, a variation of topography throughout.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Could you walk us through the density calculation, how you came up with the lot sizes?
So we looked at, essentially, what the ordinance allows us to, allows us to do, and then went through your, you know, your density calculations with the amount of land we have, took out the buffers, and then, and then we basically, forgive me, I don't know if I can blow this up here, but... Yeah, here we go. So, yeah, so we have total lot size, can everyone see this okay? On that, maybe not.
Was that at the bottom?
Yes, it's at the bottom right-hand side.
Okay.
So total lot size, which is the 21.2 acres, we don't have meeting, talking about the contiguous slopes, over 20%, larger than 30,000 square feet, we don't have any that are contiguous over 30,000. We do have some, but they're not contiguous. We're talking about the right-of-way area that we narrowed down because of the 50 trips and the five lots, with the three lots on Harris Road. That's kind of, again, how we came to that, came to that calculation. And then, so we took, and then the wetlands area that we'd had done, basically comes down to the 99,704 square feet, gives us a total number of lots that we can kind of come out, and then we came out with, in that particular thing, we came out with nine lots for those calculations. But because of the open space requirement, which is essentially the 50% of the entire parcel, we kind of went back and forth with Carla and also with Bill on that, you know, we needed to maximize that open space, so we had to basically reduce it to eight lots. So that's how we came out with eight versus a nine. We just can't, because of the open space requirement, we just can't essentially fit it in there, so.
Ryan, did you have something?
No, no, I was, I'm, thank you for going over that, because I had the same.
Okay, well, I think we'll get into the questions and comments, so everybody gets a shot. First of all, I'm gonna read a letter from Colleen Higgins, who's across the street, kind of in the lower, lower corner from the road. Hello, planning board members. I will be unable to attend today's planning board meeting since I will be working, but I am very concerned about the Harris Road subdivision project that is a subject of your pre-application workshop. Back in the 80s, that side of the road was zoned for two acre lots, and my side was for four acres due to all the wetlands. Previous lots were grandfathered at that time. I realize the contractor has asked for a conservation subdivision, perhaps as a way around the zoning requirements. However, the wetlands are still there and should preclude the developer from subdividing at this density. The wetlands and associated stormwater management are my biggest concerns. The proposed roadway for the five new homes will about, abut the stream, sending all the runoff into the stream that traverses my property downstream. The culvert is medium size, but may not be able to handle all the new runoff from all the new pavement. The culvert that empties into my property is almost occluded at the opposite side of the road, and has some erosion under the pavement near that. Please see the attached pictures, which I will give to you. That whole area will need to be addressed and improved if this goes as proposed. Please require the developer to demonstrate how the runoff will be adequately managed to avoid impacting downstream properties, include conditions of approval to ensure ongoing proper maintenance of all stormwater control systems after the project is constructed. Recently, on the home of the lot northeast of this subject property was demolished and rebuilt, the old-day property. Since then, the flooding has increased substantially on my property, which I believe is the work done on that lot, given that it sits at a higher elevation than mine, before the rebuild. I have attached pictures. My driveway has only flooded over twice since I've lived here, since 1977, until this year. Once dry, the flooded area leaves a lot of silt lying on top of the soil. Also, my basement is flooding with each of the rainstorms this year, which is not normal. I don't know who approved the permits for the groundwork across the road, but it already has impacted my property, and I am concerned about what will happen with substantially more development next door. Also, you give me the name, can you give me the name of what department I should follow up to ask about the approved groundwork on that lot? I'd appreciate it. I also have concerns about the extreme increased traffic flow from the homes that will be built on these lots. Since the road was made as a three-way, traffic increased speed has never been followed up on as promised by the town officials that I'm aware. I am also concerned about new lighting associated with the road or future development on these lots, and request the board require conditions of approval to ensure that any new lighting does not impact wildlife and current neighbors. The whole project will change the character of this neighborhood, and is very disappointing. I realize that progress cannot be stopped, but perhaps it could be lessened or spread into the current wood area more. My final concern is that some of the exhibits that are in the application package are based on old information and should really be updated to show accuracy. They should reflect that there is already one large home being built in the back of the attached field, with the possibility of a second, meaning there are really are 77 new homes in the fields. The board should consider the cumulative impact of the subdivision combined with other development on adjacent lots to ensure stormwater, traffic safety, wildlife, lighting, and character impacts are totally mitigated. Finally, this, will this workshop be recorded, which the answer is yes, and where can she access it? So Carla, we can get Colleen that information. So I think Colleen's question is probably legitimate, and we would like to hear probably more about the stormwater, and also notice that you have a snow pile that you want to put on that property. So I think stormwater, and especially considering three new houses are going up there, is probably a legitimate complaint or concern.
So just to be clear about that, when you say "snow pile," you mean, do you mean snow storage?
Yes.
Yeah, so snow storage, we're just talking about just roadway, regular plowing, snow storage in general, so.
Oh.
So it's not really a snow pile, like City of Portland.
Somebody was, somebody was visioning the Mount Baldock down to, down to Twinbrook.
Yeah, so to address the stormwater, and we covered this a little bit, but I'll go into a little more explanation. So, so we basically have, for, I guess, stormwater and traffic, so we have two existing houses that are on Harris Road already. We're adding in, we're just putting up and adding in one additional lot on Harris Road in between. And then we're adding in essentially the five lots that'll be served from this new right-of-way that we're talking about. So the new right-of-way, again, it flows basically from the top of the hill, the cul-de-sac, all the way down before it hits Harris Road. So we're putting in this stormwater control. So what's mandated on us by whether we do, you know, a commercial site or typically a residential site for civil engineers, and this is the bulk of our work that we're really talking about when we propose any of these, you know, again, commercial uses or subdivisions, is that you have additional drainage, because before, the forest was able to handle it and slow it down, and so on and so on. Now it's gonna speed up. So what we do is we have to collect it through ditches, and then we put in these stormwater treatment basins. And what it does is it does two things. For one, it attenuates the stormwater, so that it basically dumps all the stormwater in this proposed pond or infiltration basin, holds that stormwater, and then slows it down. Because what happens during these floodings, especially we've seen this flooding in the past, you know, two months, that's really taken place, is that you have these, these curves that within the first 24 hours, you have most of the flooding occur, and then it kind of weeds itself out. These stormwater detention basins are meant to hold these and infiltrate through the soil, which also gets treatment through that filter media, slows it down, drips at, you know, 0.41, you know, feet per, per second, and then gets into the drainage pipes and then releases it back out to, you know, your ditches, and then keeps going down from there.
Okay.
So, so that's what, that's what happens on essentially the stormwater piece.
Okay, so I'm opening up, anybody from the public that has questions or comments, please come to the podium, and we'll attempt to answer them.
Describe where it is one more time.
Adam, if you've got a question, can you...
I didn't understand where it was.
Oh, oh.
Is it just past Mrs. Day's field?
Excuse me?
Is it just past?
The public would like to hear you.
Is it just past Mrs. Day's field? It's like if you go up the street past what used to be her field, is it just past that? Or further on?
Yeah, it's past Mrs. Day's driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's on the other side of Mrs. Day's driveway, and there's a huge gully that comes down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Denny?
Hi, Danny Gallo, I live on Range Road, I'm representing the Lands, the Lands and Conservation Commission tonight. The open space is all prime farmland, which is a wonderful thing to see, that's a high priority for the Lands and Conservation Commission, so hats off to the developer. Do you have any particular plans for the management of the open space that we should know about, or what are you thinking?
Not specifically yet. I think we need to have a conversation with you folks and then, and then kind of come up with some plans, whether it's trails or maintain or something else, so, so I think that's kind of our next step in the process. So, no specific plans as of yet.
Other questions or comments from the public? Mrs. Colleen did mention the culvert, are we going to make sure that with all the rest of the stuff coming down, that the culverts are, that culvert is properly sized?
So you're talking about the culvert in Harris Road?
Yes.
So what the intent when we do stormwater control is we're actually gonna be releasing it at a slower rate than what it is now?
Okay.
So when we do our pre and post-analysis, essentially, so pre means undeveloped the way it is today. Post means developed with houses, with the roadway, and so on. So what we have to do by state law is basically release that stormwater at a slower rate than what's, what's essentially there, or, or not greater than the rate that's there now. So that's a touchy question, because it's a town-owned culvert...
Right.
...that, that really, we're not touching.
So Carla, that might be something that Public Works may want to look into, as far as, just to make sure that... The other thing is, you'll, there'll be seven new wells that will be drilled. Is there ample groundwater supply to service those wells and also not damage or reduce the supply of other folks' wells?
We can do a well test on that, or if you want to do a condition on that, but I don't see any specific issue with, with these lots. They seem to be big enough, and there's plenty of spots to be able to do that. And it looks like with the eight-lot subdivision, it looks like we're actually gonna be doing six new wells, because of the existing two wells that are in place.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we had a situation out in West Cumberland where we thought that, you know, this, this place that was building, you know, on the infamous giant aquifer out there, is that it turned out this particular area had lower water supply, so as a condition of approval, we added that in. So is there any other, anybody else in the public have any questions at this time? This is a preliminary, and so the next step will be, at some point, they will come back for pre-approval, and everybody will have a chance. And again, as pointed out, and I don't know a lot of you did, that if you click on the agenda, you basically see all the material that the planning board sees. There's no sleight of hand or such, you're seeing the same material that we're working on. So does the planning, does the board have any other questions?
Just wanted, I think it would be great at the next meeting, that you could address some of the concerns expressed in the letter. Have you seen the letter yet, other than Peter reading it?
No, I just heard it tonight. The problem, so the problem that we run into in some of those things is that, so we're talking specifically about our property, and like, one of them is the culvert for the town. So if we're releasing at a slower rate, that's, you know, I guess that's a Public Works issue. The other is the development adjacent to us, which we don't have control over. So again, it's something that we're not necessarily factoring in for a development that's happening, you know, directly adjacent to us. I don't know how that's being handled, as far as stormwater control specifically.
The engineering comments will be important, I think, at the next, next meeting.
Eric, do you know when you anticipate bringing this in for preliminary review?
Yeah, I think as soon as we can, at this point.
You think you're pretty close to submitting then for next month?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, if not, thank you, everybody, for showing up. And again, there'll be ample notifications, so you folks can look at the plans. What we do is we also hire a peer review engineer, the town does, to review all the engineering stuff to make sure that all questions are answered, and you will get another shot at it, at the preliminary approval, as, as other things come to your mind. So that being done, I'll declare... So that being done, I'll declare the workshop closed, and thank you for everybody showing up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're almost ready. We got one minute.